Hello, everyone, and welcome to the March 28th meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was the most rousing pledge of allegiance we've had in quite awhile. That was wonderful. Alright, we're gonna start this evening with approvals, items for approval. Start with the approval of minutes, March 21st, 2018, regular session. Do I have a motion? Julie, second, from MJ. All those in favor? That is unanimous. And we're also seeking approval of out-of-town field trip, DECA club trip to the DECA International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, taking place on between April 21 and 25, 2018. And I understand, actually, Joe, that you have some insight into this. Will you tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, absolutely. So, on April 21st, myself and three other students will be flying down to Atlanta with Mrs. Dunlap. Down in Atlanta, we are attending a conference at the CNN Center. What this conference is, it's a leadership conference. So, we go to workshops all day, team build with people from other states, learn valuable leadership skills that we can bring back to the community and help in the community, whether it be at work, in school, anywhere. And these four kids that were chosen are also gonna be stepping up next year as leaders of DECA, as it is mostly a student-run club. So, all the valuable skills they learn down in Atlanta next month will help us run the club next year.
That's fantastic. What an amazing opportunity for all of you.
Absolutely.
Do I have questions, comments, from the membership? No, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? From Tom, second by Peggy. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we are also seeking approval for warrants, G421, R226, R227, L47, FS36, and FS37. Do I have a motion from Julie, second from Tom? All those in favor? That is unanimous. And also warrant payroll, March 28th, 2018. Do I have a motion? Julie, second by Jen. All those in favor? That is five in favor, one absten-- six in favor, one abstention. That being Peggy. Alright, and that completes that order of business. Generally, at this point, we will go out of order and have our student presentation. However, I think, I get the impression you guys wanna see a whole meeting. Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and start with the student presentation? Mr. Straznik.
Yes, I'm gonna get some of the other kids could show up. This is Mrs. Gordon's second grade class. So, I have over here just a slideshow of all the posters that the kids made for the students who couldn't come and for the students who are not here. And I know Mrs. Gordon is gonna join them up at the microphone. I think some of the kids are going to talk about their projects.
Can I have all my students just come in and pick me up their posters, please?
These are 11 of our students. Can you hear me? I have my teacher voice on. So, we decided to combine social studies, writing, decorating, technologies. So, we followed a country, each of us chose one of the winter countries from the Olympics. I used up all my stickers on our "we" on our star chart. So, we were keeping track of all the pictures. The children got a chance, the children got a chance to do some research, technology, writing, and that's really all. I just gave them, could you wait a second? Some of us wanna be distracted. So, we got a chance to decorate them any way we want. I have a list of questions and they could design their own. So, as you see, they all have very beautiful posters. I don't know if you'd like us just to walk around? Would that work?
I think that sounds great.
Okay, so, we've sort of practiced. I'm gonna start with you, Tom.
The good thing I said yes.
So, we're gonna walk right along here.
Alright, exactly.
But slower. For the, come on, either way. This is just stuff. We all wanted USA, we all wanted USA as a class tournament.
Very nice, Tom. You're welcome.
Very nice.
Great job.
Nice job.
Good job, Matthew.
Really good. Very nice work.
How are you?
Wow, very bright.
Nice job.
Wow, really good. Yeah.
Perfect pacing.
Good job. Well, that's awesome.
Very nice, wonderful job.
Good job.
Really nice. Nice job.
Beautiful.
Nice.
Oh, I love the pink. Wonderful. Very nice. Wonderful, how wonderful.
Japan.
How wonderful. Nice job, Addie.
Nice job.
Beautiful kids.
That's fantastic.
Thank you. Let's give the kids a hug.
I don't know if you noticed, but there's a future school committee member, 'cause when you guys were voting, he was doing it up there. He proved everything.
Nice job, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and questions from the membership?
I wanna know, I would like to know, if it's known, what was the favorite winter sport of the class? What was the, or the top three?
Does anyone have an idea about that? What do you think, Tommy? What was one of the top three?
Probably, like, snowboarding?
Maybe, I think so.
It was one of my favorites, too.
Me, too. As we do in second grade, we go, "me, too." Another friend, Abby J.
Ice skating.
Ice skating. Figure skating or the speed skating? What do you think, Abby?
Um, figure skating.
Okay, I agree with that one. And...
You like speed skating.
What do you think, Nick?
Uh, alpine skiing.
Alpine skiing.
Another popular one.
Luge, huh?
Yeah, we like luge.
Oh, I see, you say that, that, what is that, that curling?
I think the children like the name skeleton. It's kind of a crazy sport. We talked about skeleton. Do I have any more questions?
Thank you for coming.
I just wanna say hi to my former parents, Mr. Malice. I had the daughter Maya. Mrs. Burns, I had Connor. And a grandmother, Mrs. Kane, I had Jared. The closest I got to you, Mr. Borke, is we sat next to each other at the Favorite Poem Project. Do you remember?
She still talks about it.
Alright. Last two questions.
I would just like to say, on behalf of the board, we were thrilled to see your projects. This is, having student presentations at our meetings was actually something that was developed by Julie when she was chair and is what, it really makes these meetings worthwhile. It shows us, every time we meet, why we're doing this. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys. Great job.
I'm gonna just take one second. I'm the carrier of all the posters. So, the children go back with their families. Thank you, families, for coming. So, it's so, thank you.
Careful on the steps, too.
Please be careful.
Alright, Joe, before we get to you, we'll give them a couple minutes to kinda, to file out. Alright. Joe, I'm sorry, you've lost your entire audience, but we're gonna move on to our student representative.
So, good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to start off by reporting on the talent show. On Friday, March 23rd, Wilmington High School hosted the annual talent show. Many students were able to show off their wonderful talents to their peers. They were very excited, too. We had singing duets and all sorts of fun stuff. And they even had a chance to win a free prom ticket, so I think that was a pretty big incentive for some people. WHS Lamp Lighters started rehearsals on The Addams Family. It's a spinoff of The Addams Family that everyone knows and loves. It's a, I believe one of my friends was trying to explain it to me. It's a love story between one of the Addams and someone else. It's interesting. It's a spinoff. Yeah. It's, it's a spinoff, but it's, it'll be good. That's, that's in May, about mid-May. The students are working very hard on that for the next coming months. This weekend, WHS also held marchopella, our annual a cappella competition. Brought a cappella groups to the stage, and they, they're all very good. I mean, coming from someone myself who cannot sing at all, I don't have much to critique them on, but they're very good. It was a great time, and all the students love it. Local Heroes Club is starting a drive for the men and women of the United States Armed Forces that are serving overseas. They're collecting toiletries to be shipped overseas to them. Local Heroes is run by Mrs. Martel. She does a couple of drives every year. They work very closely with iPods for wounded veterans as well. And the last thing I'd like to report on is, two weeks ago, we had a memorial here at Wilmington High School for the victims of the Stoneman Douglas High School shooting in Parkland, Florida. Fourteen student leaders were chosen to speak on behalf of the victims. Each student researched their victim and wrote a little biography about them and had a presentation in the, in the gym. We spoke about the victims, and we all had a balloon dedicated to our victim, and they, we tied him on our walking track. And they're still here to make sure that their legacy lives on and nothing like this ever happens again. And, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Any comments, questions from the membership? MJ?
I have to say, I, my first time at the marcapella, marchupella, and it's, in its 10th year, and I, the middle school has its own a cappella group. They were phenomenal. And then, you know, when you thought it couldn't get any better than the high school a cappella group, Soundscape presented, and they were, it was just, you know, beatboxing from the 80s is so much different to where it's come nowadays. But all the groups, it was, I brought my daughter, who loves to sing, and it was just a wonderful experience, and people of all ages, it's their thing they do every March. They come to the marchupella.
Both, both groups work year-round on, on their sound, on their voice, and they're very good. Soundscape's very good.
And they have, I think the, the big headliner is Ball in the Room?
Ball in the House.
House, thank you, sorry. And they were just phenomenal, and I, I hear that they're a part of our summer concert series on the Commons as well.
Yes.
And they're definitely a group to certainly check out, and I, I just think having groups like that are such a wonderful inspiration for our youth in, in honing that a cappella skill, 'cause it's just a wonderful sound. Just a wonderful sound. And, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, you as well.
Alright, next order of business, we're seeking approval for an out-of-state field trip, WHS Strings Austria Field Trip, April 2019. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah, it's been approved. We're getting an update on this.
If I may.
Please.
Yes, so, this field trip was approved in January of 2018. The dates were off, just for April vacation, so all this just shows you what the, the new dates are, April 12th, 2019, to April 19th, 2019. So, just a, just a date update, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Discussion or comment?
It's already been approved, but you can certainly...
I do, I just had questions.
Yep.
Just two questions. Is, with students moving into ninth grade next year in strings, is, was this, are they encompassed in this piece, or is it just for those who are in the ninth grade now, you know, up to 12? I just didn't know if that was, how, just a, if we know, it's not, it's not gonna change anything, I was just curious with regards to...
Ms. Peters, are you aware, or I can, we can ask?
I was only aware that the dates were changing because of education. That's the only thing I was aware of.
Right, but I, fundraising, so I wasn't sure if it's changed.
No, it has, I guess the question is, incoming ninth graders included in this opportunity?
I don't think so.
Okay, alright. And I just, as a matter of point, and as we transition to a new role after this time, I would, I always love hearing about the experiences of these trips, and I would just ask that, at that juncture, if students could come and, and just present to the school committee with regards to what they loved about the experience in Austria and what they benefit. I, I think that, I love hearing from students.
Can we just get clarity on that? 'Cause we have on here nine to 12th grade. On the form, it says nine to 12th grade, if we're not, if we're assuming it's the ninth grades that are current, why would we assume that it's the 12th grades that are current, too? They'll be gone, so...
I'm sure we can get follow-up on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I didn't think she had incoming ninth graders going, but I, I can check.
Okay. Just 'cause the form does say ninth, 12th grade, so...
We could've just found that's the grade level, the standard grade level, but she might not have ninth graders going, but I will check.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Alright, our next order of business is approval of employment contract for Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Finance. This is something we addressed at our last meeting. We congratulated Paul, we applauded Paul, and then we never actually voted. So, it was all a wonderful thing, but really, we could take it away if we want. So, if anyone is of mind, I would accept a motion to ratify. MJ, do I have a second? From Manny, all those in favor? And it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Alright. And Every Kid Healthy Wham! Walk, April 24th and April 30th, 2018.
Could I ask Ms. Stinson to come up here and tell us a little bit about this?
Good evening, everyone. So, Mr. Giro asked me to come and just sort of give you a quick update on this year's fitness walk. So, what we have proposing to do is, at the pre-K through three schools, they will be doing their walks on Tuesday, April 24th, and due to the fact that it's MCAS High Week, the fourth and fifth grade students at the West and the North will actually be doing their fitness walk on Monday, April 30th. We had started the Every Kid Healthy Walk participation last year when Mrs. Benton had come back, and we, we joined in the fifth year, and this being their sixth year, I just thought it would be really wonderful if we kept the tradition going, so that we would have the Fall WEF Walk and that fitness walk, and then do this Wham!, Wilmington Healthy Actively Moving Walk in the spring. So, that is just, all that it simply is, is just for each school to get out for 30 minutes and enjoy some outdoor fresh air and get moving. So, we'll do that again, hopefully in the fall with, in conjunction with the, with WEF, and then we'll, we'll keep this a separate event, just with our schools, within our schools in the spring.
Wonderful. Yes, MJ.
Sorry, a whole question.
It's all good.
Walking school bus. Will that be also a, a part of, I, I thought, what a wonderful idea, and if we could even, if the opportunity presents to even increase that, because between the, the kids just loving that opportunity to walk to school, I just think that's just a...
I can confirm right now that I have dates for the Shawshin School. We will be doing the walk in May, the end of May. So, the students at the Shawshin School, I have to still confirm who will be doing the actual event on that particular day. We have confirmed that Tuesday, May 29th, will be the actual school bus walking event, and then the rain date, rain date would be on Thursday, that week of the 31st. I can't speak right now specifically to the buses that will be involved in that event. I have to meet still with Mrs. King and with Officer Moon to coordinate that piece, but we have the two dates, so we are ready to rock and roll the end of May.
Will they, you won't be doing it at the Woburn Street this year, or will you?
Yes, I, I've done one. I'm going to do a second in June as well at the Woburn Street.
Okay.
And then, I know last year when Officer Moon and I were here, our hope and our intent would be then to go to the Bowwell Wildwood, West and North. So, we are, we are progressing, and I think it's just a slow process so that I make sure everything is sort of...
There's a lot involved in each way.
Right, that I, correct. So, my school is, is pretty solidly, smoothly moving, so my next would be Shawshin, and then in the fall, have Shawshin, Woburn Street, and another school, and continue to, to grow the program.
Wonderful.
And again, it's working, too, so that I can coordinate it so that we're not overlapping the schools too many weeks in that, in that process, too. So, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Any other questions, comments?
I think this sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for updating us on that.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Alright, next order of business, District Safety Committee update. Paul, do you wanna take us through this?
As you're aware, we, the district does have a district safety committee made up of administrators, police, fire, teachers, nurses, administrative assistants, and so forth. Mr. Straznik, Principal of the Woburn Street School, she has that committee, so he'll give you a little bit of update of where they are.
Just enjoy this, maybe. Thank you for having me back. What'd you touch? We'll get that up in a second. You just need to push the cable back, anyone back. Try pushing the cable back. It's coming. Any second. Well, why don't we get started while we're waiting for that to come up? So, about this time last year, the District Safety Committee came and did a presentation, just like we're doing now, about an update, just where we are, what we've done. So, we thought it'd be a good idea to come back, especially with kind of what's been going on across the country, wanted to give an update on some of the work that we've done and some of the work that we continue to do. So, the first slide that would be up there is this one, which is the, it's okay, is the, just everybody that's on the committee this year, which I would really wanna thank. It's not just the members this year, but previous members. The type of work, the amount of work that this group has done, not just when we meet, but in their buildings, has been incredible. We've come a long way in the years that I've been here. I think when I first started, there was maybe a group of seven, but now it's, it's expanded to, like Superintendent Giro was saying, it's expanded to administrative assistants, educational assistants, nurses, teachers, so it's, it's really a group that represents the entire district. So, thank you to all of them. Here's the, oh, there we go. Got top, up top, all the way up, left, right, yeah, right there. No input selected, okay. I'll just hold this up anyway. Where's the kid? I've never seen a PowerPoint presentation have difficulties. Never. There we go, alright, next one, next one. Hey, there we go, alright. Excellent. So, just a update on, on the work that we have done and completed. So, the biggest project that we undertook a couple years ago was the updating the Emergency Response Guide. The old one was a flip chart that sat on people's desks that you would flip and wasn't updated in not sure how long. So, we, we did a lot of work and research. Lieutenant Sensabaugh, who's here, reached out to different districts, Malden in particular, and we used some of their kind of formatting and some of the work that they did and just made it ours. And that was a big undertaking, but I am very happy to say and proud to say that every staff member, every teacher in every classroom, there is an Emergency Response Guide that will, as it says here, will be updated as needed. Kind of next steps, hopefully, is kind of making that digital so that it's easier to update, so that it's, it's more accessible to people rather than pulling a binder, excuse me, off of a shelf. So, that's kind of something we've been, we've been talking about for awhile. Safety buckets, again, that's something we started a couple years ago with getting donations from, from PACs. We got a donation of the buckets. You'll see on the next screen, the big process of putting those together, so we have different things in the buckets, different first aid supplies, we have emergency whistles, there's emergency blankets, so there's different things that are, that are in there, and we're continuing to add to them. But they've all been distributed, so there's a bucket basically in every classroom, in every building, also any, any other areas where there might be students. That's, you know, in the case of a, you know, a long-term shelter in place, or, you know, a long-term lockdown, if there's things that we need in there, might be some things in there that are classroom-specific, where if people have to, you know, extra, you know, barricade their doors or secure their doors, so they can put their own things in there. So, we're always talking about adding things in, but it's, it's in every classroom, which hopefully, we'll never have to use them, and they'll just collect dust for a very long time. So, another thing that we've done is, very simply, we, the early childhood centers wanted to add in another Alistair. Previously, we would just do one in the spring. They said, let's, they wanna do one in the fall, so we did one in the fall, and we're actually scheduling all the schools again to do another one in the spring. So, that was definitely, that came from the teachers. They said, why, let's do one in the, in the fall. We thought maybe they weren't ready, trying to get acclimated to school, but kids do great. They've, they've been amazing. And one of the things that we're working on currently, we've, we finished, so if you, reunification plan is, you, all the schools have an evacuation plan, so if we have to evacuate to another site, because maybe there's a, you know, a, a chemical leak in the area, or there's, you know, something happens in the building where the, all the pipes burst, or, and we have to do what's called a controlled evacuation. So, if we do a controlled evacuation, we have to evacuate to a site, and then we have to figure out how are we gonna get the parents with the children, how are we gonna reunify them? So, that's what we worked on this year, is we created a unification plan for one of our evacuation sites. And so, now what we're doing is, we're looking at different sites and coming up with reunification plans, because we have to look at basically the, the map of the building, so where are the, where the table's gonna be, where the kid's gonna be, what staff's doing this, what staff's doing this, who's checking them in, who's getting the kids and running them back to the parents. So, it's a whole big process, and we've been working on it. So, we do have one right now that's kind of in place if we had to evacuate to a certain spot. We've also talked about what kind of resources, materials we would need, like banners, you know, parent check-in, student checkout, nurses' station, tables, vests, red vests, so people know who's a staff member, who to go to. So, there's a lot of different things that we've been discussing to kind of put together, so that way, if we have to evacuate and reunify with families, everything's together. And we might just keep that bag or box, whatever it is, at the... Um, that will, as it says here, will be updated as needed. Kind of next steps, hopefully, is kind of making that digital, so that it's easier to update, so that it's, it's, uh, more accessible to people, rather than pulling a binder, excuse me, off of a shelf. Um, so that's kind of something we've been, we've been talking about for a while. Um, safety buckets, again, that's something we started a couple of years ago with getting donations from, from PACs. We got a donation of the buckets. You'll see on the next screen, um, the big process of putting those together, so we have different things in the buckets. Um, different first aid supplies. Uh, we have emergency whistles, there's emergency blankets. So, there's different things that are, that are in there, and we're continuing to add to them. But they've all been distributed, so there's a bucket basically in every classroom, um, in every building, um, also any, any other areas where there might be students. That's, you know, in the case of a, you know, sh- you know, long-term shelter in place, um, or, you know, a long-term lockdown, if there's things that we need in there. Might be some things in there that are classroom-specific, where if people have to, you know, um, extra, you know, barricade their doors or secure their doors, so they can put their own things in there. So, we're, we're always talking about adding things in, but it's, it's in every classroom, which, um, hopefully, we'll never have to use them, and they'll just collect dust for a very long time. So, um, another thing that we've done is, very simply, we, the early childhood centers, uh, wanted to add in another, um, Alice drill. Previously, we would just do one in the spring. They said, let's, they want to do one in the fall, so we did one in the fall. And we're actually scheduling all the schools again to do another one in the spring. So, um, that was definitely, um, that came from the teachers. They said, why, let, let's do one in the, in the fall. We thought maybe they weren't ready, trying to get acclimated to school, but, um, kids do great. They've, they've been amazing. And one of the things that we're working on currently, we've, we've finished, um, so if you, reunification plan is, you, all the schools have an evacuation plan. So, if we have to evacuate to another site, because maybe there's a, you know, a, a chemical leak in the area, or there's, you know, something happens in the building where the, all the pipes burst, or, and we have to do what's called a controlled evacuation. So, if we do a controlled evacuation, we have to evacuate to a site, and then we have to figure out how are we gonna get the parents with the children? How are we gonna reunify them? So, that's what we worked on this year, is we created a reunification plan for one of our evacuation sites. And so now what we're doing is we're looking at, um, different sites and coming up with, uh, reunification plans, because we have to look at basically the, the map of the building. So, where are the, where are the tables gonna be, where are the kids gonna be, what staff's doing this, what staff's doing this? Who's checking them in, who's getting the kids and running them back to the parents? So, it's a whole big process, and we've been working on it. Um, so we do have one right now that's, um, kind of in place if we had to evacuate to a certain spot. Um, we've also talked about what kind of resources, materials we would need, like banners, you know, parent check-in, student checkout, nurses' station, um, tables, vests, red vests, so people know who's a staff member, who to go to. Um, so there's a lot of different things that we've been discussing to kind of put together, so that way, if we have to evacuate and reunify with families, everything's together. And we might just keep that bag or box, whatever it is, at the reunification site. So, questions, you feel free to ask as we go or at the end. Um, the next is, again, just a picture of, there are the buckets. Uh, we had a lot of volunteers helping out. We had student volunteers getting their hours in. They were great. Yep?
I'm sorry to interrupt. With regards to the evacuation site?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there a drill? Do we do drills with evacuating the school to these sites?
No. Sorry, I didn't know.
No, 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 I think, that's fine. I, no, no, uh, harm, no foul. Can I, um, is it something that, in the future, it may serve a purpose? Because in order to test out the strategies that, that you're compiling at these sites, I, I, I would just think that a run-through, and I know, I believe other districts do do that, a planned evacuation, um, as a part of, you know, I think they only do it once a year, but would it, would it not make sense?
We could absolutely try it. I think it's, it's something that, um, could be down the road. The only thing, I know what a lot of districts do, a lot of districts have evacuation drills. What they don't do is, is the reunification process.
I see.
That's, that's the kind of part that, that at least I've seen in different districts, when I'm looking for different ones that districts do, that's the piece that's missing. So, we've done up until, um, you know, aside from calling the buses and putting the kids on the buses, we've done practice evacuation, so everybody knows where they need to go. As far as going to an evacuation site and then getting things set up to reunify, we haven't done that. It's not, it's not a bad idea.
I'm, I'm just saying, because you're, you're incorporating in that evacuation plan, bus transports, and them arriving at the school timely to evacuate.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? And, uh, I vaguely remember, I think Tewksbury did one a couple of years ago, where they just took the kids, like, you know what I mean? Just around and back to the school. You know what I mean? As, because it's good for the students, it's good for the staff. Again, it's all controlled, so that students, especially those who may have, uh, more anxious, um, backgrounds, are prepared for that piece. But it's something that's also not, God forbid, will be unfamiliar to them should the situation arise.
Mm-hmm.
We, we did do that two or three years ago. We had buses and we brought the kids.
Okay.
But we haven't done the reunification.
Right, which may not, I, I don't know how that would look, and, and I, I just thought that it might also add to those problem areas that would, might need refinement. I don't-
Yeah, no, it's, it's definitely something to bring back to the committee. Yeah, 'cause we practice, and we practice all the other drills, so it's, you know, not a, you know, something that we could absolutely think about trying.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. Yep, so there are the buckets. We had, uh, lots of high school volunteers, members of the District Safety Committee came, and I think we grabbed some students from the, um, from CARES at the Shawshin. They weren't doing anything, so we said, come on, you guys are helping. Uh, but they were great, and we did this all in one day, and stacked them back up and put them back in the Shawshin garage. And then, um, this past year, this year, we got them sent out to all the, all the schools and classrooms. So, um, that was definitely a big group effort. Um, so some of the work that we're in, that's in progress right now, um, like I said, we're, we're working on purchasing, um, different materials, different resources, uh, for when we do have to, uh, reunify parents if we're, if we're evacuating. Um, so those are some of the things, again, we're, we're kind of creating lists to say, okay, what do we need? How much is this gonna cost? And, um, kind of going from there. Um, one of the things we also want to do is, um, we talked about this year, is having walkthroughs. So, with some of the, um, public safety officials, like Lieutenant Sensabaugh, or some of the other, you know, school resource officers, maybe, you know, Lieutenant Kavanagh from the Fire Department, um, and members of the Safety Committee and, and people in the building, just kind of going around and just almost doing like an inventory. Like, do the, all these doors lock? Um, do all these doors or classrooms have, um, a way of quickly locking the door? Um, you know, does everybody have a key? Um, are there places in the building that aren't easily secured, and how can we secure them if we need to? So, that's something that we're, we're working on, scheduling that, so we can get everybody out into the buildings and see each building. 'Cause we do get that, that, um, input from teachers, especially after we do an Alice drill. So, now it's kind of just solidifying it, just putting it all down on paper. We get it all in one place, and then we can start addressing things and prioritizing things, like this is, we really need to take care of this, or. And then there's some easier things like keys. If you don't have a key, well, we'll, we'll get your key made up. And then there's some other things that might be a little bit more challenging that we'll, we'll talk about and, and figure out. So, that's kind of what we're doing. And then, again, obviously adding, continuing to add resources to the safety buckets. And every year, we're gonna continue to look at the, uh, Emergency Response Guide and see if there's anything that needs updating, or even adding new, um, adding new procedures in for something that we haven't even, you know, put in there yet. All right, thank you. Um, so then, next steps, um, so like I said, we have a reunification plan for, uh, one specific site. So, we're gonna continue working to make sure that we have multiple sites, in case one site is not available. Um, again, doing, do a lot of, um, surveys and talking to people and, about the Alice drills after they're done. We also talk to the students, kind of talk about, hey, I saw you did this, what were you thinking? Uh, one of the things we, obviously, we tell everybody is, there's no wrong decision, 'cause we don't want, we don't want teachers second-guessing themselves. They're the ones who are kind of taking the lead. So, if we see them evacuate, um, we might say, hey, you know, why'd you evacuate? Or, hey, why'd you barricade? Just to get an idea of what they're thinking. It's not to criticize, but, um, and, and I'd say, you know, I've been in all of the drills pretty much, and really impressed from the time we started till now, um, the, the, the kind of thinking that the teachers and the students are, are doing now. Before, we're, you know, a little hesitant, am I doing the right thing? Now it's, I think they're, they're kind of getting it where they know it's, I need to, need to make a decision, which is very different from, um, how it was years ago when we just did lockdowns. Um, so that's really nice to see. We also talked, again, about, um, years ago when we first started implementing this, we did a whole staff, entire district. I remember we did it at the middle school during the summer. We had people from, I believe, some, uh, Nemlock Stars come in and be intruders in all these different rooms. And we had, um, you know, different grade levels in different, in different parts of the building. I don't want to be the intruder who goes into kindergarten. I'm just saying, if you ever been in a, yeah, they were, they were a little dangerous. Um, but it was, it was really good. And so everybody kind of got the same training, um, we, you know, debriefed and talked about, you know, um, how did that go? Especially now where we have a lot of new staff. Think it might be important not just doing the regular drills, but actually just getting the staff together and doing that again. Um, so that's something we're gonna talk about doing, uh, maybe, uh, this coming year. Um, let's see. And, yep, one little thing, um, talked to OIT, they'd like to have a member on the District Safety Committee, and we said, sure. So, we're just waiting for them to figure out who it's gonna be. And, uh, so, that's where we are. And, questions?
I was just going to notice, we had a bullet for exploring the option of having another district-wide parent night.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I think that would be really helpful. I know a number of years ago, when we were first talking about Alice, I think I actually attended it, it was very impactful, and I think there was even a student-made video that showed what it would look like. That was a number of years ago. I think now that we have younger kids coming in, new families coming into the district, be really helpful, 'cause it's pretty eye-opening. You might have read a little bit about it, but until you actually see it, it's, it's a, a much bigger deal.
Lieutenant Sensabaugh has a really good presentation that he uses.
Yeah.
But I think definitely having another one, just like we have a lot of new staff, we have a lot of new families.
Right. I think it's time to do it again. That was, that was really good, and I, I think Wilmington should be very proud, because we are one of the forerunners with that.
I also, to say too, there's, there's, you know, I'm hearing from people in other, other districts around the state wanting to come and, and observe, you know, our Alice drills, especially with the younger kids. They're like, how do you do that?
Right.
But, um, so that's really, that's really nice to see.
Yeah, no, it's great. Glad to see it.
I was gonna say the same thing. I think that's a great idea, have another one. Uh, Manny?
A couple of quick questions. Um, as far as, uh, training the staff on Alice, how often is that done?
Um, well, we, we, technically, they're trained when we do the drills, but we also, um, like I said, a couple of years ago, we first were rolling this out across the district. We did like a big training during the summer, where all the staff came, and it was at the middle school, and we had different classrooms identified. Um, so that's what we're looking at doing again.
So, that's, that hasn't been done in a couple of years?
Right.
And then the other question I had, you, you talked about, um, purchasing materials and resources. Is that something we budgeted for, or is it something we have to?
It is, it's relatively minor funds, like a banner and stuff, and a couple of schools. I think Jeff had put some money in his budget in the idea. You know, it, it's not, we're not looking for thousands and thousands of dollars.
I just want to make sure that we have the budget for it.
Yeah, Jeff had put some money in, in, in the budget.
Yeah, I added, this year, I added a, a new line item, um, in, uh, Woburn Street's budget for safety, school safety resources. So, that's where I'm kind of, uh, putting that in. And again, it's not, it's not big money. It's, um, I mean, we can probably get it with, you know, just what I'm budgeting for now.
Great.
Yep.
Thanks.
I'm Jim.
I know that the, the group is pretty significant in size. Would, would a school committee member have an opportunity to sit, sit upon this? Or is it appropriate for a school committee member to sit on it?
Probably not.
Okay.
I think, I think this is more, uh, school-based, and I think we present it to, to the school, uh, school committee, 'cause, um, it is, it's not policy, budget, or things that-
Right.
The school committee's part of. So, I think, I think the way we have it set up works pretty well. And, and if, you know, we, we can present, you know, more often, I think at the end of the year, we kind of, um, there's a lot of people, you know, on the committee, and, and there's a lot of work that goes on. So, I think it makes a lot of sense that we present, you know, you know, around this time, so that, you know, what, what was done, what we're still trying to do.
Fair, fair enough. I just thought it was a very intriguing, um, piece.
And I'll ask too, I'm not, I'll ask Superintendent as well, um, inviting some of them to, I don't know if anybody's been part of or seen Alice drills in any of the buildings? Is that something?
Yeah, that, that would be something if you wanted to, you know, participate.
What I can do is, I mean, I can, we can, I can stick you in a classroom and, uh, or we can, we can make some of you the, you know what? You can be the intruder at the middle and high school. They throw stuff at you.
I don't have that much padding on me.
Yeah. Uh, no, but I can, what, maybe what I can do is share with Paul, once the schedule is done, um, and then if, can share that out, and if you'd like to, uh, attend a training, just to watch, you know?
Thank you.
Be happy to have you.
Appreciate that.
Tom? Just talking about this, wondering, how many teachers would you say would be CPR, like, trained, like, you know, for an emergency situation?
Hmm, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I mean, is it something that we should look into, getting, like, offering a class for CPR or something like that?
The RAC classes are offered.
We do.
I just don't know how many people are certified.
I mean, I've worked that-
Mrs. Stinson is, she just raised her hand.
See, but how, how would we know that? You know, like, if I was a teacher in the next classroom and I didn't know that she was, is there a way to like, you know, like signify, you know, who is on that floor, so everybody knows? Or, in the school as a whole, knows who, who is and who isn't? I mean, I think it might be if, if a child was choking or something like that.
We have the right person here.
Can I say, I'm sorry, can I say one thing? I didn't do, I want to thank, there's a bunch of the, the District Safety Committee members who showed up tonight, so I wanted to say thank you. If you want to wave, just so, to you.
So, we, we do have a list of CPR-certified staff in every school, just like we have a list of EpiPen-trained staff as well. So, there is a list available, and there are staff certified in every school. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's fine.
If I may just piggyback on what Jeff had mentioned in regards to the staff training. I know you had asked if we had done a big district-wide. Just to add to that, in the beginning, when we have new teachers who do, are new to the district, um, the new teacher, um, two-day training, they are trained with the Alice as well. So, just to clarify.
That's right. At the new teacher orientation.
Yep, so those new teachers, so-
That's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Yep, so those staff who are here, we do review all those protocols and things at the beginning of the school year, and new teachers to the district are trained at the beginning of the year.
And one other-
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. And one other thing too, when we have people who are new in the district, who haven't been part of that, um, I know in my building, what I'll do is, uh, have a, uh, veteran teacher in the classroom, so it might be a special ed teacher. It will go into that classroom and kind of model and show the teacher how to do it. So, they'll be part of it, but, you know, the other teacher will be taking the lead, so they can learn by watching them. So, we do different things for when people come in mid-year or after that time.
Jerry?
And I was also going to add then, for the CARES program, Lieutenant Sensabaugh has come out at least the last two summers that I've been around to do a training for all the CARES staff, um, because they do the summer, the before and the after school. So, all of them have been Alice-trained. In addition to the CPR question, actually, all CARES staff members, it's required that they are CPR and first aid-trained. So, we're actually really covered from opening to close.
Great.
Just to, because you, I've got a question now. With regards to the evacuation piece, if something were to occur during that hour of the day, is there a plan?
Yes. We're part of the reunification plan as well. We have a, we're, we have a same flow chart as they do.
Okay.
That's geared for our program.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you.
Jim?
I just want to say thank you so much to the whole committee and to Lieutenant Sensabaugh for really leading us. Um, I work in a lot of schools in the state, and Wilmington comes up again and again about how we are just such a model for other schools trying to get this up and running. And when I talk about the safety buckets, I go, oh my goodness, they're so far ahead. We have to, you know, find out more, and I just want to thank you for that, and for keeping our kids as, as safe as they are, and for all the time you've put into this, and then also for this presentation, and for making us aware of all that is going on. Um, so it's very exciting to be a part of that. And, and I think as a parent, we all feel really good to know that we are really kind of the front-runners in that. So, thank you very much.
And I'll say too, I've been in other districts, and this district in particular, um, has such a tight relationship with public safety. You know, with the, um, police, fire, um, and that I haven't seen in other districts. And so that's a big part of it, because, um, you know, I can call Scott, or I can call, you know, Officer Moon, or what, like, and they're, they're right there, which, which is amazing, and that helps with a lot of different things. So, a big credit to, to them as well.
I'm just gonna add one more thing. Um, I also agree with the parent information night would be helpful. And I wonder if just, I think the administrators have been fantastic about getting the information out to us, um, when they're happening, what they're going to consist of, really good, like, strong emails about what to expect, so that we can then talk to our kids about it. I think that's great and been very helpful and appreciated. Um, and I wonder if at the open houses, I mean, sometimes we do these big nights, and it's hard to, so I wonder, if people go in for the open houses or parent conferences, maybe that would be another time to sort of just have a small area where parents could ask questions about that? 'Cause I think that that does come up.
Actually, that, that's a good idea. We actually, I talked about that with, uh, the North Side PAC, um, at our, we have our fall open house, is to, instead of hanging out in the lobby, which gets pretty crowded, um, it's just to have them all go in the cafeteria, and we can have, you know, different presentations going on there, different information, so that, that could be part of that.
Even showing them the safety buckets and having those, I think, parents would-
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Be really excited about that. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Jeff, I had a couple of questions about, and I, these are things that you were, in your presentation, you were vague on. I don't know if you were vague by design for safety reasons, but I was curious, what's in the safety bucket? And, um, the evacuation site that has been determined, is that something you're?
Yeah, so, uh, let me, so the safety bucket, trying to remember, help me out. So, there's, uh, we haven't put the rope in, so there was an issue with the rope, because we bought long rope, but we had to cut four hundred pieces of it, four hundred buckets. So, we're, we're working on that. Um, different things like glow sticks, flashlights, um, some, uh, first aid, uh, like gauze, things like that. Um, those safety, um, emergency blankets, um, trying to think of, uh-
Do you have belts?
Gloves, there's, uh-
Whistles?
Rubber gloves, whistles.
Duck tape.
Duck tape.
Do you have belts?
Belts?
I've seen in-
We could just-
Certain videos, how with the doors that open, that they've taken a belt and wench, you know, I just, that's what I just-
Yeah, no, I think part of it too is, is teachers putting in their own thing. What's gonna work for their classroom.
Oh, good.
'Cause some doors open this way, some open this way. So, there's classroom-specific things that, um, that they can do. Um, and then the question about the evacuation site. So, uh, not long ago, you could go on the website and download the brochure that says, Woburn Street's first evacuation, second evacuation site, third. Um, the problem with that is, is if we, uh, send something out that Woburn Street is evacuating, everybody, all the parents, everybody's gonna go right to that evacuation site. We're not gonna be able to get the kids off, we're not gonna be able to get ready. So, the idea is, I won't say we're keeping it secret, but for safety reasons, uh, you know, we also want to make sure that we can get the kids there safely, get them set up. You know, Wilmington Police will be there, kind of helping with traffic and, and, and things like that. Um, and then we will let them know, this is where we are. The other thing too, in this, you know, this is sometimes where my brain goes, um, if we have those sites listed, we have to evacuate, they know where we're going, whoever that might be. So, um- Yeah, so we're, we're, um, so, yeah, it's kind of a secret, but, yeah.
Thank you. Anything further?
Well, thank you so much for your presentation and thank you so much for all of the time and effort you, that you've all spent on, uh, on working on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe next we are going to, um, have a discussion on school safety and we're joined by Lieutenant Sensabaugh, I believe. Is that right? Are you not, if you're not hearing about this till now?
A little bit surprised, but that's okay. I talked to the chief earlier. He sends his regrets.
I, I want to, for, I, I first, personally wanna again thank Lieutenant Sensabaugh. He's been instrumental in everything we've done in the District Safety Committee, Alice and stuff. And really appreciate everything you've done in the Police Department and the Fire Department. So I truly appreciate it.
You're welcome. We enjoy working with the, uh, School Department very much. So it's always been a very productive relationship and so, you know, top pleasure, but thank you.
Okay, so we just, uh, wanted to see if Lieutenant Sensabaugh, and just talk a little bit about school safety, some of the things Jeff talked about. And, and as we mentioned, there was some discussion at one point about, um, in the community, I think, with everything, the tragedies that have gone on and so forth. Metal detectors and different, um, safety precautions. So if you could just talk a little bit, you know, from your perspective, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, from the, the eleven years I spent on NEMLEC STARS, we have portable metal detectors and X-ray machines in the event that something were to occur, you know, occur acutely within a school system. There's a report of a knife or a gun, um, so on and so forth. And there had to be perhaps a controlled exit or, you know, a controlled entry in the morning. Those types of, um, that type of equipment is available to the town of Wilmington through NEMLEC by the Police Department's affiliation with NEMLEC and the Chief of Police. So on an emergency basis, that, you know, that equipment is always available. It's, was recently used in a community nearby where they had an issue, um, a significant issue. And they were able to get the equipment over there pretty quickly, uh, stand it up, uh, very rapidly. Staff it with people that are trained, uh, working with the local community to go ahead and do a controlled exit to ensure the safety of this, that student population in that, you know, that particular time. What I will say as far as permanent installation of metal detectors, um, you know, I think it warrants a lot of discussion and consideration by the school committee and the principals within their buildings certainly. And perhaps the district safety team, it's a, it's a large expense. It's not only just the cost of the actual equipment, you have to talk about now staffing it. How do you train? Who's gonna do it? Do you run into labor issues in terms of, so I'm not trained to do that, that's not my job? You know, I think you may also, I, I think you'd incur, uh, having to add actually staff to run that. I will tell you that metal detectors, when we stand them up at an emergency basis for a controlled entry in the morning, you know, again, within like the, the realm of NEMLEC STARS was, some of those controlled entries can take upwards to two hours. Now imagine doing that every day. So I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. What I'm saying is you have to strongly consider and be, you know, really, really seriously slow down and look at how that would reshape your school day, how it would look like, who would staff it, how long it would take to get children and staff in and out. And then at that point, are you just scanning children or is it all the staff? Is it visitors coming in? Is it parents? Oh, Scott forgot his lunch, I'm gonna bring him his lunch. Now they have to get scanned. I mean, what's good for one should be good for all. You'd need a focal entry point for each building to do that. In the building you identified, if that's something you wanted to do. And then you'd really, really, really have to ensure that every single perimeter door at that point, uh, was not open. Wasn't being pegged open cause someone went out to have a cigarette and they forgot to close it, something like that. That never happens. But, um, you, you get my point. It's, you'd really have to be very, 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 um, on the ball in terms of ensuring the whole building is completely secure. Otherwise, you might as well not even have them. Cause someone could sneak around the back, pass something off to somebody, put it in a locker, put it in a bag, and then you've completely defeated the whole system. A lot of inner-city schools that have, uh, have done these things have found issues just like this. They have a different, obviously a different concern, different issue, day-to-day violence sometimes, unfortunately. And I understand it, I get it, but to me, I think the more, the more bang for the buck is, is investing money into developing programs, mental health programs, working with identifying students at risk, um, and, and training, training staff, doing drills, doing, you know, large-scale drills to test your policies and procedures and tightening all that stuff up. One of the things that sometimes I get criticized for is although we've done a great job, everyone's done a wonderful job, the work's never done. When it comes to this particular topic, the work is never done. You learn from every single incident that occurs, you learn what works well, what doesn't work well. And then you come back and you, and you meet and you discuss, hey, you know, what happened? Let's talk about Florida, let's talk about Texas, let's talk about Wilmington. And what went well, what didn't go well, what can we improve upon, be honest with each other and, and, and let's move forward, let's build on it and keep tightening things up. So it's something that really has to fire on all cylinders and it takes a collaborative approach. Police can't do it on their own, fire department, school, mental health, nurses, public buildings, all these entities should be involved, DPW, transportation. You know, it, it, it takes really, uh, uh, it's a unique thing. But I think what Wilmington does really well that, and it's been alluded to tonight, is there's already really healthy relationships already established and in place that have been there for many years for us to continue to leap off of and, and bounce off of one another. Everyone's always there to help each other. Um, you know, when the emergency arises, it's what are we doing when there is no emergency? That's the important piece. What are you doing to tighten things up, be critical of, of yourself and each other? And say, what, what can I challenge myself to do better as a police officer? And what can we all do as school, fire, and so on and so forth to really make sure that you have preventative measures in place, reactionary measures in place? And, you know, where, where are the deficiencies and what, what does the school potentially need from you as a committee? Budgetary issues, support from parents, things like that. So I know it's a mouthful, but it's that stuff that's on my brain all the time. I've been in this arena for a while. It's very rewarding work, but unfortunately, fortunately and unfortunately, I've had to respond throughout a, you know, a, um, a region that encompasses sixty different cities and towns and have seen some significant tragedies. And I've seen some communities that work really well together. And I will tell you that the ones that do, the students, the, the parents, the families, the faculty psychologically heal quicker and more wholly because they have trust and faith in their district, cause they can see they work well together. The ones where it might be a little disjointed, it takes a long time. And sometimes it may even be at, at risk of saying this, some permanent damage due to lack of trust within the system and not having a feeling of safety of, are they really, can they do this for me? Do, are they getting this right? Do you know what I'm saying? So for all the extra work and maybe the extra money that sometimes has to be spent on ensuring these things are done and done well, trust and believe that it's a, it's a, a very, very sound investment and it's worth your while. Cause I've seen when it goes well and I've seen when it does not go well. And it's kinda disheartening to see it sometimes.
MJ.
In light of, I, I, I can, you know, sitting on the committee when Sandy Hook took place, we revisit, well, how do we, you know, the entries? And in the last, um, school violence episode that just recently happened, we look at another, we, another deficit. How do we secure, um, at those times of entry, you know, start of our school days or, or the end of our school days? Are we currently in, is there anything, any kind of conversations at this time? To try to see how we may, um, offer the most security at, at those times when the doors are open and kids are exiting? I, I didn't know if that discussion had taken place or if it is taking place or at what status that that may be. I mean, that's just probably one of, one, I can't think of one of the other larger deficit that I think all of our schools face.
No, it's a great question. And I, I, you know, I think MJ, at the time, because it, it impacted all of us so greatly, not, certainly not the least. Certainly Joanne Benton, it, it impacted her very greatly, um, to the point where she looked into, um, laminate cover glass. But unfortunately, for good reason, there are fire codes that prevent tragedies, injuries and deaths in fire, sometimes work against. And it's not a fire police thing, it's code. Um, things were developed many, many years ago. Fire retardant furniture, carpet, sprinkler systems, all these things are all great innovative ideas. And they've, knock on wood, there hasn't been, I think, a child lost in a fire in a public school since nineteen fifty-three. So clearly it works. Some of those protocols, door locks, you can't lock them, you, you know, you have to have, you know, egress. All those things that are great in an emergency, biological, chemical, fire, any of that smoke condition. Also sometimes slow down this kinda new, and I say new because it's been really since two thousand that, you know, in the early two thousands that we've all started to realize something else needs to be done with building design for schools. And we've all inherited old schools. We have older schools in the, in the system that are very tough to secure. Um, and you have to come up with innovative ways and you have to come up with ways within building code and fire code to address that. On a larger scale, I would hope there'd be some type of public discussion at the state level to kinda start correcting that. Because the buildings that get approved to be built nowadays really could incorporate some pretty nice innovative strategies and still not make the children and, and the teachers feel like they're in a prison. Still can be open, can be welcoming, natural light, but there's things we could do, I think, to secure them and, and do a better job. But now when you have a building within your system that you wanna look at, you know, you have to be really careful. You have to have, you know, proper staffing, you know, at the front, thankfully in, in this community. We do have school resource officers, that certainly helps. You know, all those things definitely help, but it's, it's maintaining door and window integrity throughout the day so that we're not just, you know, leaving, we're not allowing anybody to freely come and, come and go as they please. I mean, I've walked into districts before and I haven't gotten challenged down deeper than the building. I've walked into a Wilmington school, I'm like, you know, they kinda know who I am at this point. But some people that don't will say, hey, who are you? Can I help you? And people aren't afraid to, you know, aren't afraid to challenge you and, and stop you. But our, you know, our doors are secure, but like you said, at the, those critical times in the morning and the afternoon when they're open and the kids are coming and going, it's tough. It's not an easy thing. It, it's not an easy issue to solve. And, you know, it's not, I, I think it probably warrants further discussion. You know, the way my mind works, when they were, a lot of the children are doing, the students are doing these walkouts the past couple of weeks, I started to worry about them leaving the building and being outside, certainly exercising their rights. I applaud it, I support it, but then I started thinking, now they're outside, what if someone, well, well, you, you're not, you're preventing me from coming in the building and I wanna do a school attack. Well, now you're all leaving, you're making it easy for me. Those are the types of things I worry about too. Um, we have to discuss those things. We have to, we have to ask those questions, we have to bring it up and we have to try to find ways to, you know, to, to be as secure as possible.
So where do we start? So where do we start? I think it's, I say, I say it, um, how can we proceed? Because I think it's, it's, you wanna learn, learn, make a, turn a positive from such a horrific negative to ensure it doesn't happen again. And we minimize that ability. Do we start, I mean, do we start now to have, start having those discussions? Does it start at the state level with colla, you know, collaboration? I, I just, I just think it's.
You know, it did a few years back with the, the Governor's School Safety Task Force. I mean, it did start, that was a pretty robust report. Um, I had the honor of serving on that, played a small role. But a lot of great thoughts like that came out, ideas, and there was a lot of, there was political support. There was support from, you know, DESI and, um, the Building Committee, you know, State in Boston. There was a lot of stuff, um, you know, and then other things happened. You know, and, and it's not that people forget, it's just we as communities need to keep the foot on the gas and say, you know, we want some answers. Just like the kids are doing now, I think they're setting a good example. We as adults have to keep the foot on the gas and say, we want answers too. These kids are demanding answers and as the adults, we're looking to provide them and we're gonna hold you, you know, responsible too, to help us, um, get some of these answers. But, um, there's a lot of good resources out there, um, now. Um, you know, that Governor's Task Force is a, is a good one. The STARS Toolkit, which is starstoolkit.org, there's a, a ton of information on that. We are using that on the district safety team, um, for a lot of foundational stuff for, for like the reunification plans and things of that nature. And that stuff that some of my colleagues have tried to really put a dent in a lot of those questions you have. And, and we wanna keep developing this and keep it current. And when new deficiencies, if you will, show up, it, through our analysis of any school tragedy, you need to react to it. The better thing would be to anticipate them before it becomes a painful lesson. And what's going on, what can we do about it? How do we stop that from even happening? And, but you can get yourself into a vicious circle of overthinking things too, and what if this, what if that, what if this? So I, I think it starts with safety teams in each building that answer to like a captain that comes back to the district team and reports. He has our concerns, he has some of our thought processes. What is unique at the Beltwell might be not shared at the Shaw Sheen or the Wildwood. Certain schools look identical. They'll, they'll probably have same issues, similar issues, but other schools don't. They have different aged children, they have different children with special needs. So each one of those things has to be treated individually, which these folks do a fine job of doing. But we just need to keep developing that, um, and, and moving forward. I mean, it, it's good to bring up questions and talk, but we need to, I think, stop maybe assigning people, hey, why don't you take that part? Why don't you research that? Why don't you look into this? Come back to the committee with your recommendations and just keep moving these things forward. There's a ti, I, I will, I feel comfortable saying this even as a police officer, there is an immense amount of talent in this district, meeting your teachers and your administrators. Um, there's a lot of passion, enthusiasm, and I think they wanna help, I really do. And I think we should continue to tap in to that and get their feedback and, and support them in, in any way. One person can't do this, it has to be a team. It just doesn't work.
Thank you.
So I know when I went to high school, I, I grew up in Somerville, and they basically had, um, seniors, uh, heavily sitting at the doors to make sure that we didn't leave the building. And that seemed to work out really well. I mean, gave them something, they would sit there with a newspaper and make sure nobody left. They would talk to us at times. And, you know, it worked out great. And I don't know if that would be the solution to, you know, problem, but something to think about that, you know, we have seniors that might be interested or, you know, people that might be interested in just, you know, sitting at the doors and making sure nobody comes in and nobody leaves.
When I went to high school, his name was Edward J. Woods and he'd yell at me every time, every time I went to leave. Mr. Sensabaugh, you know, you know, and so, no, that really never happened. Um, yes, it did.
But we do, I mean, at every school, we do have, with the intercom system, we do have somebody checking who's going in and going out.
What I'm just saying is that the, the unattended doors, that he was mentioning earlier about, you know, if somebody props open a door, you know, grab, just that, there'd be somebody sitting there on a chair, just making sure that doesn't happen. It's putting a human, you know, being there. I mean, yeah, we can put cameras there and watch people do that. But, you know, somebody there stopping them from leaving or coming in, you know, so, you know.
A high school where I taught had forty-seven doors. So when this came up, um, we had a, we had racial riots at one point, which actually started out being a male, female, girlfriend, boyfriend incident. And that's what it really was. We wouldn't have made Time Magazine if we had been able to get that fast enough. But, but in any case, they came up with the idea of putting in the metal detectors. And they got it, they got it there in the main lobby and then they realized, we have forty-six other doors to do something with. We can't, they put thousands of dollars into it and it was never used ever. And so it's, it's just really, we have to think about it and don't get so reactionary that we make, you know, kinda silly decisions. But when I went to the play at the middle school this weekend and saw those eighty kids so proud, and then tonight was a reenactment of it almost, they were so proud, these kids, of what they're doing. And I like to think that these kids aren't the kids that we have to worry about and that we have to, we have to, I feel in our school system, there are many teachers who can point out to you, kids who are having problems. And they think, and you said earlier, um, Scott, you said that the teachers and the, the, the people that we have, it's so important and it's so true, and we have to listen to them. When they tell us, this person needs help, this child needs help in school, I don't think we listen enough in, in our schools. And I think that's one of the areas, we have to really pay attention to the people in the classroom who see the kids every single day. Or the bus driver who sees what's going on in the buses. So I hope that would add to the discussion too.
I, I completely agree with you. And when I, I traveled the state with the commander of the bomb squad and we did eleven different sessions on threat assessment, training for the Commonwealth. And that's part of my presentation is, it's, it's puzzle pieces on a slide. And it takes, what you often find is when one of these tragedies happens, when, um, a child breaks down to the point where a child breaks down to the point where they're going to commit an act of violence to express their rage, depression, whatever, I'm not a psychologist, but whatever, it doesn't happen overnight, there are plenty of warning signs along the way, signposts along the way. And the bus driver knows about it, the teacher knows about it, the neighborhood kids know about it, the parents know about it, the cop knows about it. It's getting everybody together and actually sharing it and when you start putting those pieces together, you get a pretty sad picture, but you get a more complete picture of what's going on with that child and that plays into the mental health system. We now have social worker on staff, you have great mental health providers within the district. It's us coming together as a team and I think maybe coming up with a more colla, although we do collaborate well, maybe coming up with even the next level of a more collaborative approach of identifying students at risk and making sure they don't ever become an issue, they don't get lost where they feel like that's the only way they should express themselves is through violence or anger. And then it negates, not completely, because you can never control an outside person you can't account for, someone from another community, but it greatly reduces the potential of one of these situations developing in the first place. Something I think is Dr. Pollan had done of, if anybody had a chance to see him, he has a great strategy of asking staff, for instance, like during the summer orientations and meetings prior to school, getting started or during a professional development day, everybody write down the names of the students you interact with on a daily basis. Or check them off, rather, the student roster is supplied and they check off. And you'll find a small group of kids that nobody interacts with, those are the kids you want to go talk to. Those are the kids that the student leaders need to talk to, that the teachers need to talk to, that your support staffs need to talk to and make a relationship with them and check in with them on a routine basis, because they're getting lost. They're completely getting lost in the shuffle.
One other thing I'd just like to add to that is, I just saw tonight in the Apple that there's a young girl in our school, a teacher in our school system has a young daughter who's needing severe help. And I think that we have many kids who are going through divorces in their families. We have many people who are going through cancer in their families. It's, I think maybe that we, we worry about the outliers who are really in trouble, but then we've got another layer and I think we have to start working with those kids. How do you react when your father's dying of cancer? What are some strategies we could give you? I think that that's another area that really eventually needs to be looked at.
That's a very good point, I mean, you'd never know what's going on in the, inside a home, but sometimes the teachers get a pretty good, oftentimes the teachers get a pretty good snapshot of what's going on and to be able to, and I know there's regulations that prevent a lot of sharing, but that's something that needs to be tackled at some point too, not Wilmington at a state and national level because it's preventing us from talking about these kids from across police to fire to public education to private education. I mean, I work with the abundant life and I know there's, there's a desire there to be more collaborative with public schools too. As I know there has been with, you know, just giving them, using them as an example, but there are, we all share the same goals. We all share the same, a lot of times the same families. Or children that were in one system that left, came back, you know, this isn't foreign to the same children that may be a concern. You might know the names is what I'm saying. But as a community, it's not about public versus private versus, it's about a community coming together and reaching out to these kids and these families, which, again, I think we, we have done well over the years, there's always room for improvement, I think we could do even better.
Well, thank you for all you do.
Anything further? Lieutenant Sensibar, thank you so much, I think this was a
Steve, are you going to make questions from the audience? I know, you know, we're going to make public comments or is that an appropriate time or?
I think I'm doing that right now, Robert. You just asked me a question.
Robert Hayes of the aforementioned Apple, thanks for the plug, Peggy. So we've gone about 45 minutes and I wanted to bring up two elephants in the room that, I'm not saying I endorse these ideas, these are just ideas that are out there in the universe right now. But there was a poll that came out less than a week ago. There've actually been lots of polls kind of showing the same results, but there was a Reuters, Reuters? I'm not sure how you pronounce that. Reuters, I got it wrong, okay, Reuters. So a poll came out less than a week ago. About 75% of adults in this country say they want armed security guards in schools. So I was wondering, Scott, and maybe the committee's thoughts on that. And then, again, not necessarily endorsing these things, 45% of Americans say school staff should be encouraged to carry a weapon. And then kind of bringing it back more locally, a few, a few years, maybe five years ago, the district used to have three school resource officers, there was one at the high school, one at the middle school, and then one that I believe split his time between the north and the west. Someone can fact check me on that. So I believe we're now down to two school resource officers, one at the high school, one at the middle school. And then I believe Officer Moon kind of, I don't know what the word would be, but gets around to the lower schools. But I was wondering if there was any thought about bringing back the school resource officer at at least one of the, one or two of the lower schools. Those are my three questions.
I think, I think, Robert, to your point, because I know you're going to turn around writing a article about this. I think we need to be careful because some of these are bigger national political issues. We are not a political entity in that we're going to argue for a particular national cause. We may have our individual opinions. I'm going to choose not to share mine this evening because I don't really think it's appropriate for me to do so. If my constituents have an individual question for me, they're welcome to reach out to me. But I would caution my colleagues. Just my opinion.
Anything from the membership? I actually think that was pretty well said, Julie.
Thank you. I, not to, not, I know what you're trying to do and I appreciate that, maybe we can answer the question about the resource officers? Because that's a budgetary issue, that's a police force issue, that's something that we do talk about as a school committee.
You're so smart, Julie.
Not all the time, but I just like to try.
And did Scott have any comments or not?
I mean, I don't have any issue addressing, I'm trying to recall everything you asked, but in terms of, well, in terms of, was one of them arming staff?
That is one of the ideas out there.
And I hope they don't get nervous, but bear with me for a minute. I'm going to tell you flat out, there is a tremendous responsibility to carrying a firearm, number one. Number two, in a school system, you're an educator, you're there to teach, you're there to walk out for the children, certainly security is everyone's responsibility, safety. But there's a different mindset to carrying a firearm to protect another person. That's point number one, that's a heavy burden, that's a heavy weight. We go through an incredible amount of advanced training as police officers nowadays, it's 26 weeks of training. Criminal law, criminal procedure, defensive tactics. When you can and can't. Actual firing a firearm and all those things and not, what I would really want the public to understand is there's a, I've said it, there's a massive responsibility to carrying a firearm and preparing oneself to say that I may have to use that against another person someday. So that's kind of my answer and I'll, I'll put an exclamation point on it by stating that as police officers, if I entered a school or any, any building where there was an active shooter going on, I have to make very, very, very quick decisions under a lot of stress. And if I enter that situation and I'm unclear as to who the bad guy is, if it's a teacher or if it's a bad guy off the street, that's a recipe for a lot of problems.
Sure.
So I hope I didn't step on anybody's toes or upset anybody, but that's my answer. That's my answer, I'm not saying that's the school committee's answer or the police department's answer, that's my belief. I'm a firearms instructor, I'm the training director for the department and I understand what it takes to train people to that level and it's, it's, it's a lot. If you're going to do it right, it's a lot. Because it's training physically, but it's also training your mind and preparing yourself for a day that you'd never want to see come.
Well, thank you for the response and I, I just wanted to sort of ask this in public session. And it was on the agenda, so I thought it was very timely, so. And again, I don't necessarily endorse any of the questions I just asked, I just want to get those out there, so thank you.
Thank you, Robert, for asking.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant. Appreciate all that.
Thank you for having me. Hopefully I filled in the chief's shoes okay. Hey, let me know tomorrow. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
All right. Now we move on to public comment, which apparently we just had. Anybody else? You don't have to ask political questions, you can ask anything you want. All right. Correspondents, do we have any correspondents, MJ?
No, not the same.
No correspondents? All right, our future meeting dates are April 11th, 2018, April 25th, 2018. Now I will seek a motion for adjournment, which
I have a, do have a subcommittee report briefly?
Yeah, why, actually, that's not on our agenda, yeah, please.
Okay, I just want, WEF will be holding a lip sync fundraiser on April 27th at the Wilmington Tewksbury Elks. They're looking for 16 teams to compete. Registration for the event ends April 13th. Tickets for general public are on sale now and can be purchased at the door. For more information, please visit WEF's website at www.wilmingtonedfoundation.org. And as you know, all funds raised by WEF come back to our teachers and schools. So they're hoping for a very well-attended event and if it's a WEF event, it's going to be an hysterical event, so they'll be dancing, they'll be, that'll be fun. So we hope that everyone, you know, we hope that you get your girls together, you get your guys together for the lip sync fundraiser of the century. Thank you. I'm trying, Robert, last minute. Thank you.
Any further subcommittee reports? Yes, Jen?
I don't have a report because we just met last week and we have not met with the homework committee since last week, so there's no report there. But I did want to just quickly discuss with the board maybe the need for a transition for the new superintendent, a subcommittee of two or three people who can work with the transition for Dr. Brand. As, since he is sort of, he's not really participating, but he is kind of participating in just maybe a committee of people who could then correspond with him and then report back to, to all of us about his plans for entry. So I just wanted to discuss that with, with the group.
That would be something we hadn't done in the past. So, I mean, what we would, we had done previously was receive an entry plan from the superintendent, discuss that in public and approve or disapprove. So can you give us a little more flesh on your vision for what the subcommittee would do?
Sure, I feel as though a lot, I would, well, one, I don't think we've met, not all of us have actually met with him. So I, I served on the screening committee with Mrs. Kane, so we had the opportunity to sort of, but I don't think we've actually had any sort of meeting with him and I think that would be important to do prior. So that was one thought, that some of us have had more contact with him and others haven't had a chance. And I think when it comes to this, things happening in the district or openings and some of us probably just want to email and say, hey, what do you think of this? And I wonder if we couldn't just be a little bit more systematic about the correspondence with him and that it's, again, not just one person emailing or one person, but we're doing it together so that we can kind of share ideas and make sure that his entry is as seamless as possible with the information we have from one another, but I know we can't sit in a room with him and meet out of opens, I understand that. So I thought the best way to do that would be through some kind of a subcommittee sort of mimicking the work we did even early on with the screening.
Manny?
Just real quick, I think last time, did, did we not have a workshop over the summer that sort of talked to that?
He will have already started. Yeah, he's, please forgive me if I'm wrong, but Dr. Brand is starting July 1, but there's some things that may happen between now and his official start in July 1 and he has, I believe he has expressed an interest in being involved at a kind of high level, if you will. It might be helpful to have a more formal way of communicating with us. I think is what Jen is trying to say.
I was just thinking, I'm just throwing it out as another thought too. I wouldn't be opposed to having a small subcommittee, wouldn't be opposed to having a liaison, you know, I, my past experience has been that once they, they sat in and got the lay of the land, then the individual meetings of, you know, one-on-one meetings would be, what's your interest, where do you see? That typically takes place, I just, I think it's a great idea, but I just don't know, I think it would be, I think it would be something that I'd like to see how Dr. Brand wants to segue himself in. So I don't know if a liaison is, would be easier in that transition piece initially, maybe? Or if a subcommittee, or a subcommittee, I think I'd like to, I'd be interested to see what may help him segue into, into our, can't hurt, certainly, I don't see anything bad come from it, but I just, I just wanted to throw that out, I guess, see if anything stuck.
Any further questions, comments? Jen, would you like to offer a motion?
No, I think Peggy has something. Did you have something to add?
I, no, I won't. I was, but even thought, this is fine.
Sure, I'll make a motion to establish a subcommittee, a transition subcommittee to work with Dr. Brand.
All right, do I have a second? Peggy? All right, all those in favor? That is six in favor, all those opposed? One abstention? Well done, Jen. All right, now. Oh yeah, well, yes, all right, we formed it. Now, may I have volunteers for said subcommittee and what is our vision, is it two people, three people?
I think if three are interested, three would be
Okay.
Great.
All right, who'd be interested in volunteering? Jen, Julie, Peggy?
No, I think I've got to play with negotiations, I think.
All right, so we've got Jen, Julie and Peggy. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, now I would move on to an adjournment into executive session. Do I have such a motion? MJ?
Excuse me. Sorry, thank you. I make a motion that the school committee will enter into executive session pursuant to MGL C 30A, section 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel of which we won't, of which will not return to public session.
Do I have a second? Tom? This requires roll call, Jen?
Yes.
Julie? Myself, yes. MJ?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone, this concludes our public session, thank you very much for joining us.